I'll call the meeting to order. And our first order of business this evening is considering approval of the Plan Commission meeting minutes of March 13th and March 23rd, 2017.
So will second.
There's a motion by Jensen, second by Truel. Does any commissioner wish to remove or amend an item from those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Council Representative report, Alderperson Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Since our last meeting, we had a number of items that went to council. Probably the most notable was the Casey's General Store, which we tabled at the council level, because when they brought the proposal into us, they were showing access points on both Highway N and 51, and they have not gotten approval on the 51 side. And so council tabled it. Matt would...so we'll...once we get that, it'll come back. Beyond that, we are continuing to move forward with the substation lot out on McComb. We did approve a couple of the extraterritorial zoning issues. We did have take up the Hilldale Park condominium, again, the one house, the one duplex that needed an exclusion. That was actually rejected at council, but it's coming back then next...it's coming back tomorrow night. So I think that will probably get approved. And then the other actions that we took, did...council did approve the combining of the lots on Nottingham, and again, continue to work on the substation. So I guess the most...the biggest thing is just noting that the Casey's is out there pending more information.
Correct. Thank you. Status of developments, Planning Director Shiel.
Contained in your packet is the monthly update on status of development. I think one thing that's noteworthy is just the number of single-family home starts that have taken off this year. We've had eight single-family home starts since the first of this year, which is far greater than the two that we had year-to-date last year. And I think that's a great improvement. Most of those, all but I think, actually, maybe all of them have been in the Nordic Ridge subdivision. There is one new construction on the corner of Robey and Johnson. Thank you. So that one may have been after the fir...that might have started after the first, as well as one on the east side in Eastwood Estates.
Thank you. Commissioner Hannah.
Thanks. Is this...any action on Shiloh Court? You heard anything from them? I saw that the permit's now been approved.
Yeah, Shiloh Court, they're looking at trying to adjust the number of buildings and the number of units, possibly. And in doing so, they may come back with a different plan. But in addition to that, the comprehensive plan process is plugging along. So I think they're monitoring that and waiting to move forward with much more at this point, until some of those things come to resolution for them.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a request by DAC Printing LLC, Dennis and Amy Kittleson, for approval of a downtown design overlay zoning district project request to remove the building at 305-315 East Main Street. We'll have a brief overview by Planning Director Shiel.
A number of components in your packet. You'll recognize there's also a letter, a couple of pieces of correspondence from the city attorney. You'll recognize there's a resolution for consideration, which will require the commission to deliberate on a number of components. And either for or against, there's aspects of the resolution that need your tweaking to move forward. Laura Callen is here from the city attorney's office, and she's going to be able to assist with questions and the process if necessary.
Thank you. So I'd like to...we'll close for a public hearing. And then rather than closing that public hearing, let's leave it open for a bit as we discuss and have our own communications, in case there are others that would like to come back up and help us out through those deliberations. So I'll close our regular meeting and open for a public hearing. And first, I have registered Amy Kittleson. Welcome.
Thank you. So I think you all have the packet in front of you and the information that...what we would like to do and the answers to your questions, I think, on why and what and so forth. So I don't know what else you would like me to say about it, but I can answer questions or...
Okay, that's perfect. And they might not have questions right now, but I'm sure as we go along, some questions will be generated. So that's why I'd like to keep the public hearing open as well, so we can hear from you again if we need to have some questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, I have Colton Kittleson.
Hi there. All righty, so I'm actually just in favor of DAC Print's plan to remove a decrepit building in the downtown area in favor of opening up the space and making the city that I've lived in for 24 years a little bit better. So, you know, I appreciate you guys letting me extend my First Amendment right to talk, and I thank you for you guys' time.
Great, thank you. And next registered is Peggy Verregan. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peggy Verregan. I'm here with the Landmarks Commission. The Landmarks Commission would like to express its profound concern over the nature of the deliberation, or lack thereof, at the Plan Commission meeting in January to demolish 315 East Main Street. And further, that components of the application which were requested by Attorney Dregney have not been provided. The downtown design overlay zoning district encompasses the same area designated as the Main Street National Register Historic District. While it may be easy to argue over specific language in the ordinance, what it means and doesn't mean, and the language may not be what we would choose today, but the intent of the overlay zoning is very clear, to quote, "preserve and enhance the historical quality of the downtown," unquote. It is disingenuous to suggest that the spirit of the ordinance is something else. The historical quality of the downtown is its buildings. It's also disingenuous to suggest that demolition in the district somehow is the same as preserving and enhancing the historical quality of the downtown, or that the demolition of a National Register-listed building preserves and enhances the historical quality of the downtown. How does demolishing an historic building preserve the historical quality of a building? What is objectionable about the previous discussion regarding the demolition of 315 East Main Street is the lack of any thoughtful deliberation. There were numerous opinions offered about a property owner being allowed to do whatever they want with their building, but where was the critical thinking? Why were there no questions about whether this action appropriately reflects the values in the zoning overlay, or discussion about how this proposed action would preserve the historical quality of the downtown? And no reasons were given for supporting demolition that referenced any part of the ordinance backing up the assertion that demolition was appropriate. Of course, further, I must draw your attention to the applicant responses to Attorney Dregney's letter document. In it, the attorney clearly states that a description of conceptual open space does not provide all the required information, and that the plan in the application needs to be an actual final plan for the project, rather than a conceptual plan that you might change later. These materials were not provided. In fact, the application instead says they will consider uses for the space after grading and seating. So information required before approval for demolition will not be provided until after demolition and seating for grass is done. Clear, direct answers to other questions in this document were also not provided. It would be improper to move forward evaluating this project until the required elements are submitted. Having the authority to make demolition decisions carries with it important responsibilities, doing due diligence, seeking input from Stoughton's very own Landmarks Commission, having thoughtful deliberations, seeking viewpoints. Each demolition of an historic building in the city erases a part of our history. Making this decision shouldn't come lightly. Demolition is not reversible. A vote on this issue tonight is premature without having a thoughtful evaluation of the merits of a proposal. And as was described in the packet, a redevelopment plan has not yet been conceptualized or proposed. The Landmarks Commission urges the Plan Commission to consider this action with the seriousness and respect it deserves. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And next registered is Kathleen Johnson.
Hi, thank you. I'm also on the Landmarks Commission. I'm new to the council of the second district, and I'm also a member of our old house district also. I have a fondness for old houses and houses that need a lot of TLC, which this one does. I moved to Stoughton because of it, and since I've been on the Landmarks Commission, I've learned a lot, not only from the citizens of how they want this city to be represented, but also the Landmarks has a lot of basis in the facts of why they want to keep a historical home. I myself have bought a lot of fixer-uppers. I actually bought a house on Hill Street, and we ended up calling the street Hell Street because it was a lot of work. It was abandoned for two years. The plumbing was burst out. The windows were bordered up, and it needed a whole lot of work. But we did work on it, did improve. I do know background of historical homes and what needs to be done on it. And we ended up fixing that house up, and we bought it for like $53,000, not to boast on the money part. But we turned that house around. I got historical stained glass windows, and that house, when we sold it, was the best house in the neighborhood. We couldn't even comp it because it was so nice compared to the neighborhood. So I just want you guys to be aware that where some people look at it as a house that needs to be torn down, others in the community would love to have an opportunity to be able to fix this up. And a lot of people weren't even aware that the house was available for sale. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And next registered is Susan Schuster.
Hello. I'm a longtime resident of Stoughton, and I moved here because it was such a beautiful town. And I own a house on Academy Street that was built in 1885. I...there are features in the house. It's not a big fancy Victorian. It's a humble little home, but I'm trying to keep it restored in its original condition because I think that's important, because this is such a historic city. It's rare that you find cities that have that kind of awareness that you have here. And you have a beautiful downtown renovated, historically beautiful. I have friends that come from out of town, and they come downtown, like, say, at night, and the streetlights are shining, and they say, "Oh, I'm in your little town. I'm in your cozy little Stoughton." And I'm flattered. Cottage Grove doesn't have that, Sun Prairie doesn't have that. You know how unique we are. So I had no idea that that building was for sale. I've driven past it a million times. I just had no clue. I would have put an offer to purchase it, seriously, and not torn it down and restored it to whatever it could be used for. But it's such an important location on the corner, facing Main Street, and then facing a public library, which is another proud asset of the city. This is just not like stuck back out in the country. People are going to see this all the time, and why not be consistent with the historical awareness you have? I mean, this is a corner. The library...it's like a prime location for a historical renovation, and to demolish it is just beyond my comprehension. Just...I just could not even believe that I heard that that was going to happen. And I think it's critical to save it. It's unique. It's historic. I don't know the date that it was built, but I imagine it's 18-something, and that fits right with the rest of the city. To be kind of rude, it's a no-brainer to me. Why would you want to destroy this? Why would you allow this to be demolished? That's what I...I just don't understand. I just don't get it. And you've demonstrated your awareness and your kindness and your finances through the whole city, all these years. You build on other people's work, on other people's awareness, their money. It just doesn't start today and end tomorrow. I mean, it's a long-term project. So please, save this building, like you did...we all did with the Opera House. I mean, look at it. It's the clock towers, the pride of the city. It's a landmark. It's a landmark town. Don't make a big mistake, because once it's gone, it's gone forever.
Thank you. And that...those are those that we have registered to speak on this item. Are there others by chance? If not, I'm going to...Rodney, if you think this is the right way, I know that you'll have questions, but I think we'll have our attorney Callen sort of walk us through the resolution.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. We've prepared a draft resolution. It's in your packet. And the purpose of the resolution is really to suggest a framework for making a decision on the application that's consistent with the standards set forth in the ordinance.
And this is so that if I could interject real quick, so that we're certain we're following all the right...the right process and the right steps in the process?
That's correct.
To help us frame a decision, whatever that decision might be?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And so the standard that should guide the commission tonight is set forth in paragraph D of the recitals. And that restates the language of the ordinance that the Plan Commission show in deciding the application shall focus its review on the application's compliance with sound aesthetic, land use, site design, and economic revitalization practices. And that this effort shall be guided by the comprehensive plan. So we've taken each of those standards and broken them down into subparagaphs that require or suggest that the commission answer each or make a finding corresponding to what's written in the resolution. So it's a guide. The ordinance provides these factors and allows great flexibility to the commission to weigh these factors and apply them in its discretion.
Thank you.
Quick clarification.
Commissioner Hannah.
You said three different things. Is it require, suggests, or guide? They're not required, right? As far as...it's more of a guide?
It's a guide, but you don't have to make a finding, I don't think, on every factor, but you have to base your decision on at least one of these factors and always be guided by the comprehensive plan.
Right, thank you.
Further questions? Otherwise, I think we'll continue to make our way through the ordinance. Rodney, if you'd like to repeat that or...
Well, I think the resolution is at least a point of continuing the discussion. I have it on the screen. It's in your packet. And if the commissioners would like to deliberate on any aspect of it, or just put their thoughts into the record of the discussion on the item, I think that would be helpful.
Commissioner Hannah.
Sure, thanks. Rodney, can you just clarify, since we are referencing the comprehensive plan, what the current zoning is under the comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan doesn't assign zoning, but the downtown central business district, I believe it's currently zoned central business, which is the downtown zoning classification. That zoning classification does not allow for residential units within the first 24 feet of the ground floor of any structure in the district. And the only reason I highlight it is mentioned about how it was probably originally constructed for a house. It would limit its ability to be reused as a residence, at least on the first floor.
Thank you. If you wanted to...I know I found it helpful, and I don't remember who. I think Peggy Verregan addressed a little bit of the incomplete application that was submitted at the very beginning. And I know that we have an update to that application, and I don't know if you've seen that or not, Peggy, that's in our packet this evening. She left.
Peggy had to leave.
Pardon me?
Peggy had to leave.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, so I'm talking to no one. I'm sorry. But anyway, so for those that are at home, as well as those in the...in our room tonight, there was an updated application submitted from the Kittlesons that really addressed Kittlesons, that addressed some of those questions. Welcome, Michael. We've had our public hearing on the request to remove 305 and 315 East Main Street, and now we're deliberating while keeping that public hearing open in case you have more questions. So Alderperson Engelberger, and then Hannah.
Thank you, Your Honor. I could give you a lot of reasons why this should not be approved and should not even be acted on tonight. One is...one is the reason that we're...we've got a conflicting ordinance. And the attorney's given us some guidance on that, but I guess I would like to hear from our attorney what...why we would use one part of the ordinance regarding where the Plan Commission makes the final decision on a demolition like this. And in another place in the ordinance, it states that the Plan Commission recommends to the council, why would we follow the first part but not follow the second part of our conflicting ordinance? That's my question to the attorney.
Sure.
And then I've got other questions.
I believe my partner, Mr. Dregney, provided a memo setting forth his opinion that the application was governed by ordinance 78 hyphen 913 force of C. And I can't really add any additional value to the opinion he gave that I'm trying to find. I think he said that the that chapter 78 governs, and that the city is bound by another state statute, 66.10015, to act on the application under what the statute refers to as existing requirements. And according to Mr. Dregney, those existing requirements are set forth in chapter 78, which gives the Plan Commission authority to decide the application.
Which also states currently, under the CUP procedure, the Plan Commission makes a recommendation, and the city council makes a final decision. It's in the same ordinance. So that explanation did not make it clear to me that this should be acted on until the ordinance is non-conflicting. So if I can continue. Peggy pretty much stated it in her comments, that we need to be looking at the process as opposed to opinions of what we're dealing with here. And I think we're kind of getting to that. I appreciate the attorney has given us some guidance regarding that. But, you know, there's still...he put a letter out to the owners, and I don't know if I can find it here. I've got too much stuff going here.
Are you looking at the January or the March letter, Michael?
I'm just looking at his most recent letter that he sent to the owner. And it stated, "The conceptual open space plan included in your application does not provide all of the required information. In addition, the plan in the application needs to be an actual final plan for the project, rather than a conceptual plan that you might change later." We don't have a final plan in the packet, and therefore, I don't think we should be acting on this tonight.
We do. I think it made the packet, correct? There has been some updated...
The responses in there.
Are we taking verbal responses for plans these days for our Plan Commission? Is that how this works?
This is...well, I'm not speaking on their behalf. I'm just indicating this is their...their response to his letter was in the packet. And in here, the color-coded responses are identified at the tail end of each of the sections of Mr. Dregney's letter.
I see the responses, and those are opinions. Those are not factually based things. Here's another, in the next one down, under A, aesthetic considerations. Their answer is, "We believe the building is not contributing to the aesthetic nature of the district and does not appear to fit in with most downtown historic buildings." The fact is, this building is designated by the National Historic Register as a contributing building. That's a fact. That's not to be disputed. So, you know, I mean, there's something else. So I believe that we should not be dealing with this until we get a plan that is what's required under the ordinance. That's another thing right there.
Thank you. Commissioner Hannah.
Thanks, Mayor. I mean, I guess barring an actual physical plan, I mean, I don't know what it would show us. I think what we're acting upon is that it will be turned to turf. That is the plan that we're acting on. And if I understand it correctly, if they do want to make any alterations, that, you know, would have to come back to Planning Commission in the future. So I do feel like we are acting on a plan set forth. In regards to ordinance, I know there's been a lot of discussion on the council level about changing ordinances and, you know, adjusting things, and there's a moratorium on demolition, but, you know, there's also a reference in here that when the application was submitted, that I only think it's fair to be treated under the same ordinances when it was submitted. I don't think it's ethically right to apply it now, as, you know, these homeowners have submitted all the materials, gone through everything that we've laid out as a city prior, and then in the middle of the process, pull the rug out from underneath them and say, "Hey, well, actually, you need to do this, this, and this, and this," because... they even went to the State Historical Society, said, "We're going to do this demolition. We want to apply for the demolition," and got approval. The Landmarks Commission did not have it designated as a local landmark. And I feel like at this point, it sounds kind of like a scramble to me to save a building that was not recognized until someone wanted to do something with it. And to then change the rules after the submission does not seem right. It doesn't sound ethical at all. So I want to make a motion for approval of this. And I could go through what I think as far as how it, you know, applies to the comprehensive plan. As far as having cohesive, you know, aesthetics, all the other buildings downtown... As far as having cohesive, you know, aesthetics, all the other buildings downtown serve as commercial buildings, this is the only residential one, so I don't see any cohesiveness. It is the only stick-built one, I think, within those blocks. And that architecture seems to be the only historical reference for this building. I feel like, as far as the open space plan, it does provide an acceptable land use at this point. I feel like something that is not provided downtown is green space. I feel like it could enhance the downtown by having green space. I'll take a few examples. I was in Lake Mills downtown a month or two ago, and they have a beautiful green space downtown that was very active, and their downtown was alive. I feel like as far as comprehensive planning, I agree with one of the responses in, from the Kittlesons, that I see that this property would be part of a future larger development that could still be, have a historical aesthetic and nature. I find that the building itself proves to be very difficult to find another use, and there hasn't been anything suggested as far as a potential future use. So it would leave another open storefront, if you may, that's been referenced in the past about downtown. And then as far as, yeah, as far as number two, under F, it's not, I already stated, it's not practical given the nature of the building. It cannot have residential first-floor uses. Economic revitalization, I feel like the building would advance as it's setting forth a future vision for downtown development as part of a comprehensive plan. I could see it being a larger development, and I think it would advance open space plan and, I think, attract more people downtown and keep people downtown for a longer period of time. To reference, you know, the survey that has been referenced in the past about why people want to be in Stoughton because it's historic, in that survey, people also responded they'd like to see more green space. And when referenced to the larger development on the riverfront, that was the number one, and very strongly response was green space. And so I think that is a statement in itself that the community would like to see more green space, and it is something that we do not have downtown. So for those reasons, I would make a motion for approval of this demolition.
There's a motion by Hannah. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Maloney. So it's further discussion? I know that Susan Schuster would like to make a comment, if you'd like to come up to the, to the podium, please.
I'm just a citizen, a homeowner, but, Mr. Hannah, don't you own the property next to this building?
I do not.
No, the Kittlesons do.
The Kittlesons own this building?
Yes, that's correct.
But don't you own property next to it, near it?
I do not own that property.
Okay.
The Kittlesons own the property next to this building, which they also own.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Since when did green space become a priority in the Stoughton downtown area, across from the public library, on the corner, I mean, the address is Main Street? You don't get any more authentic historic than that? I also heard that it was going to be paved instead of the green space, that it was going to be made into a parking lot.
No, the proposal, as we see it in our, in our packet and in our materials this evening, talk about green space, which is planting it with grass at this point. What Mr. Hannah is, what Mr. Hannah is referring to is the community surveys and the survey with the comprehensive plan.
Right.
That a majority of those respondents noted that they would like to see more green space in the area.
But were they given the opportunity to say, "At this address, would you like to see green space or see this historic building at 315 torn down?" Were they given that choice? I don't think so.
Well, no, that wasn't specifically identified.
This is sort of sneaky. Something's just not right here.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I know that the, when you're finished, I know there are others that would like to speak as well.
So you're willing to demol, what it comes down to is the, the right of the owner to do with what they want with that property because they own it. True. Or the interest of the community does that in a historic building? Which is, you're weighing this, is that correct?
That's what the commissioners are discussing.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Have you ever heard of eminent domain? Okay. I just don't see why you would destroy a building like this or allow it to be turned, I don't care what you turn it into. And it was, you were mistaken. It was a, a commercial building, there, there were attorney's offices in there, so it wasn't a residential building. It, it could have been used for 100 different things.
Okay, thank you. I know that we have others that are wishing to speak if you're, if you're done. I know that, I can't remember his name, I apologize, Colton Kittleson, thank you.
All righty, yeah, actually, as a citizen, if I would have gotten a survey, I would have voted for green space, you know, something where if I had children, you know, down the road that I could take them to. You know, my own girlfriend and I at some point would probably like to have children. Her hometown, right on the main street, has little areas, there's a gazebo, there's benches on the grass that you can sit and read next to a library. You know, I thought, I find that an amazing idea. Same thing with Lake Mills. They have a, a pretty robust downtown with green space that people, after shopping, you know, going to their libraries, you know, checking out a book. Where, where, where could they sit? They could go sit on a lovely little bench, you know, same thing if we had a, a spot open for the parade. You know, we boast our amazing set in my parade that I've been proud to see every year, and, you know, people would like places to sit and enjoy it. And I think that's an important aspect of a town. You know, I would have pride, you know, having a town and for, you know, a lack of something, I, I don't see it right now, you know, so. And I do find if the, the building has been for sale for, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, council, for has purchased a number of years, well, you know, why wasn't it done? You know, why wasn't anything? If it was supposedly a landmark building and the commission's saying, you know, it's, you know, why, why didn't they purchase it? Why didn't somebody on their commission purchase it, being they, they run that, you know, they run that committee, they should have known. And they, you know, so, thank you, you know, Mayor Olson.
Thank you. And I know there's a gentleman here, if you'd like to come up and, come to the podium, please, and let us know your name and address.
I haven't signed up in advance.
Nope, that's fine, nope.
Good evening. My name's Todd Barman. My residential address is 308 South Monroe Street. I've lived in Stoughton for about 12 years, 13 years now. And I'm actually here on the agenda for, I'm the last item on the agenda because I own 603 West Main Street with my wife, it's the old Sico Food Mart. But I, I just, I wanted to at least put a couple things on the table because of my experience. Not only the experience I have here in Stoughton in that when my wife and I purchased that particular property, we were actually looking for other properties to purchase, and one of the buildings that we looked at was that particular house as an opportunity for retail. And we had, we chose the gas station because it's right next to, to our residence. And so we, we saw the potential in that building. But I'll be honest with you, if, if and when the building has been for sale, it has not been very clearly for sale to the public because we would watch it. But I also wanted to step up to the podium because of my experience professionally. I have worked in historic preservation for the entirety of my professional career. I was with the National Main Street Center for about eight years. I was with the Wisconsin Main Street Program for about six years. I'm currently an economic development consultant specializing in historic commercial districts, working with Main Street communities across the United States and up into Canada. And so I just want to chime in a little bit on historic preservation and economic development. And when you look at green space, when you look at surveys that are done by communities, gauging public interest in green space within the community, it's one thing to say we want more green space, and it's another to be evaluating where that green space is most appropriate. And there's green space within neighborhoods, there's green space within side streets. Research shows that green space along Main Street is not good economic development. When you have green space within a historic commercial district, particularly along the main drag where you typically have storefronts, there's a lot of research out there, and I can provide it to the, the planning commission if you're interested in it, that those spaces become opportunities for interruption of the strolling commercial traffic. It's places where the strolling shopper who's walking up and down Main Street will stop and turn around and go back to their car because you're typically not programming those spaces, they become dead spaces. Now, when there's a festival or an event where there's a, an organization like a Chamber of Commerce that has planned or scripted some sort of event in those spaces, they can be very, very vibrant at particular times. But for the majority of the week, the majority of the time, they become dead spaces that will actually interrupt commercial traffic. And you'll see within the district where people will walk and stroll, they might get all the way up to the library, and they will look and they will see that space that is not programmed and is not active, and they'll turn around and start walking the other way. And I'll see this in districts across the country that I work with. And so I think you have to understand that while a community may say that they're interested in green space, you have to really evaluate from a planning commission perspective, from a municipal perspective, where those spaces are. And I also just want to say that when we look at the appropriateness of a residential building, that building was built as a residence, and it's not uncommon within historic commercial districts, particularly as you start to get to the fringes of those districts, that you'd have historic houses. And those houses are appropriate, even though it's not masonry, even though it's not a zero setback, traditional commercial two-story storefront. That was an appropriate development within the history and the development pattern within Stoughton historically. I mean, because it's there, okay? It's not like we're asking to build that house there now based on the current comp plan and the current zoning codes. I mean, I would never recommend that you'd build that house there now. But the fact is that it is appropriate and it is historic, and there are a lot of uses for it. Typically, what we see within historic commercial districts that I work with is that you'll see an art-type business, some kind of retail that will be more of a destination retail kind of business because it doesn't have a very strong window display, area that will draw people off the traffic, so it tends to need to be more of a destinations-type business, so you'll see art businesses in there. My wife and I were looking at, you know, like, you'll see Christmas, the 20, the 365 day a year Christmas store kind of, of opportunities within those kinds of spaces. And so I, I think as you weigh this as a plan commission, I mean, I would look at, if we're really looking at economic development, look at the fact that when you create that turf, an unprogrammed turf is really going to negatively impact the downtown from an economic development perspective, plus you're losing that historic resource. And again, I, I feel a little bit challenged because I've never been inside the building, so I can't speak to condition, I can't speak to how much money it's going to take to, to bring that building back. But I have seen buildings and districts that I work in that are much more deteriorated than that that are brought back and become vital parts of the commercial district, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Not, please, let's, yes, let's stay ordered. One more comment, then I'd like to get back to the commissioner's discussion and the resolution.
So, I'm sorry that you didn't know it was for sale, but it was for sale for many years. There was a for sale sign in front of the building by the blue and white sign, forgive me, I don't know. Secondly, it can't be residential. So it can, it can be a wonderful old home, but it can't be that. Thirdly, we're not going to develop it into anything if it can't be removed, so I have multiple pictures of it with me tonight, if you'd like, on the thing, the tablet, if you'd like to take a look at how, what the condition is. I don't, I don't know if you want to do that, or if it matters, or if it takes up too much time.
We do have some in our packet this evening.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, Amy, but we do have, we do have some in our packet tonight, so I think we've, commissioners have had a look on the inside.
Okay.
Thank you. And you've got more if you'd like, if the commissioners would like them. Thank you. For the commissioner's discussion, though, I'd like to guide us back. We have a motion on the floor, I'd like to guide us back to that resolution. And Rodney can put it up if that helps to focus the conversation. And maybe Laura, you can help us walk through the resolution to help answer some of those questions we have out there.
Sure. So, starting with paragraph E of the recitals, the, the recital contemplates that the plan commission will make a finding that preserving the building either is or is not important to preserve the aesthetic or other qualities of the district based on the following qualities. And again, the form provides an option that contributes to or detracts from the historical and visual character of the district.
So that's the first one, and I, I'm contemplating that according to Mr. Hannah's motion, that, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, why don't you walk us through this one?
Well, sure. You know, I, I definitely could, honestly, I think this one's a tough question because there's pros and cons to both, right? And you could, you could argue it either way. And I think, you know, a lot of these can, can be conflicting. I guess in that sense, I think there is potential to preserve aesthetic qualities and architectural qualities. But at this point, you know, it is not contributing to the downtown aesthetic. There is no clear future for it to ever be revitalized in the near future. I haven't heard anything as far as, you know, anything specific about the architecture that makes it, you know, anything that really stands out that needs to be preserved. So, you know, that, that's why I asked for the clarification earlier, these aren't required, but they're suggested. I think the way I would answer this is looking at more of long-term development of this site, whether or not it's demolished or saved. Honestly, I would like to see action taken with this building, so I don't know how you want me to answer that each question specifically, but, you know, it, yeah, there certainly qualities, I think there's, you know, you could find qualities to anything and it's, you know, to save it, but, you know, is it, is it contributing to the downtown visual character of the district currently? No. It's, it's, it detracts from it visually. I think it looks very poor for the city. Have a, a building downtown that is, has holes through the wall, that has, you know, a roof that is about to cave in, I don't think it's safe. So at this point, I think demolition makes sense because there is no future for this building in, in the immediate future or the long-term future. So is that good for the city and economic development? No. The proposed open space, I guess, from one of the people who came up and commented, I think I could find lots of research in my field of landscape architecture that says green space downtown in public spaces provides, you know, adds to the health and, you know, overall downtown space. It can keep people downtown in spaces, so I would argue overall downtown space. It can keep people downtown in spaces. So I would argue against that, that you could find, you know, documentation and research that says the opposite. So I think that if you're looking at the current snapshot, the proposed open space plan for the property contributes to the visual quality of the district by adding green, and it's not all hard space. We can, I can keep going on to F if you want.
Are there other Commissioners that would like to speak to this while we're still on number one and two of E? Alderperson Engelberger.
One or two of E.
We're looking at our resolution, and these are the items that the Attorneys have determined are important.
Well, yeah, let me just mention a couple of things here. You know, I like to listen to the professionals when I'm dealing with this kind of stuff. And, you know, we just heard from one a short time ago. We heard very similar statements from our Landmarks Chair, Peggy, who works for the Wisconsin State Historical Society in preserving historic buildings in districts. And, you know, one of the things that the point was made, when you have holes in a Main Street of a historic district, it detracts from the historic district. And, I mean, these are professionals telling us this. Let me give you a little summary of this particular building that was designated in, it was listed as a National Register in 1994. State Register listing was 1993. This property is, it was built in 1884, surveyed in 1990, 2003, and 2013. Historic use is as a boarding house. The architectural style is Italianate. These are all things that contribute to its historic nature in this historic district. On the backside, and on their website of the Wisconsin State Historical Society, there's another five or six paragraphs regarding this particular property. Show it to Scott, and you can pass it around if you'd like. You know, this is serious business. This isn't, you know, opinions on, I think it should be tore down, because people should be able to do anything they want with their buildings. Obviously, you can't do anything you want with your buildings, because we have ordinances that prevent that kind of thing. So I'll have more to say later.
Laura, is it your best opinion that we continue? I think we've got the guidelines. I'd like the Council to continue here a little bit, and then I recognize that you'd like to say something.
Well, the second factor focuses on the land use, and whether the demolition and the plan to convert the, to grade the site and cede the site either does or does not provide an acceptable land use, at least until a new structure is constructed on the property. And then that second part of that factor considers whether preserving the building, again, is or is not practicable, given the nature of the building and the legally and practically available uses of the building.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments regarding this section of the resolution? If not, we'll go on to the next one, if you would, please.
The economic revitalization factor asks the Commission to consider whether removing the building and ceding the site would advance or would interfere with economic revitalization of the district.
Okay. Comments or thoughts? I know we've had a couple of different comments on that one. Alderperson Maloney. Alderperson, you've become an Alderperson, Michael. Welcome, welcome. How about Commissioner Maloney?
Thank you. Commissioner. I guess that's my number-one reason to support the demolition is that we're putting in, I guess, regulation changes currently, and there's no certainty for the redevelopment when a building that I consider unsafe as an engineer, close to the sidewalks, is being maintained. If you're waiting for the perfect plan to come along and not allowing any type of certainty for redevelopment, it will never happen.
Thank you. Any further comments? Commissioner Truul, you look like you have something to say. Not yet. Not yet. Okay. Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I still haven't heard from the Attorney why this wouldn't go to the Council for a final decision, as it states under our current ordinance.
Well, I guess...
With the CUP procedure.
All I can do is refer you to the opinion that Mr. Dregney gave on January 20th, that sets forth his analysis, that, and his statutory interpretation, and his conclusion that demolition is allowable if it's approved by the Plan Commission under Section 78-913, Sub 3 and Sub 4.
Still haven't heard a reason. I believe we would be violating the Constitution of the state if we did this. I just want to say another thing about, you know, people were talking about open spaces. That's great. You know, we talk about open spaces all the time with our parks, and we continually look for more open space within our comprehensive plan in our city for planning. Obviously, Main Street is not the place for it, as we've heard from professionals. And besides that, I don't believe it's even allowable under our comprehensive plan. Where does it say in our comprehensive plan we can have a private-public park in our downtown historic district? Where does it say that? Rodney, can you point me to that?
Not to that phrase.
I mean, I don't know how that...
Doesn't say it's not allowable, doesn't say it's allowable, that particular phrase.
Okay. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think it's important that we go through the rest of the points in the resolution, and then we can have a more, a general conversation. Again, we need to act on, and there's a motion on the floor, and I know we have another, a comment from folks that are here. So Laura, if you could...
Well, we're down to recital H, which is the ultimate question on the factors. And that asks the Commission to find that demolition of the building and conversion of the property to open grass space either is or is not in compliance with sound aesthetic land use, site design, and economic revitalization practices.
And that really is what our motion will address once we get to the motion. So I talks about...
I is the ultimate question on whether to, oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I is relates to the comprehensive plan consistency factor, whether demolition and conversion is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you. Rodney, any comments for the Commissioners, or your overall?
All I was going to highlight is on the screen, the question's been raised about the interpretation by the City Attorney about whether, what prevails, what sections of the ordinance. This is a segment of his memo that was provided in the packet, so the Commissioners and public can read this, or review it, or contemplate it. But this is the section that's been referenced a number of times related to his opinion.
Okay. Thank you. I know we have one more comment from the audience, and then I'd like to go to, we do have a motion on the floor. So Mrs. Schuster?
Just bend your ear, but I just don't like what I'm hearing. As far as, this building was built in 1884. Is that correct?
Michael has the data on that.
So by my math, which is not so great, I think it's 133 years old. How many of us will be around in 133 years?
Okay. I think we all know the answer to that one. Yep.
It's not really a laughing matter.
I don't mean to be laughing, but it's a question that we know the answers to.
It's not a joking matter. What the city has wanted to do is pass on some historic legacy.
Absolutely. It's valuable to us.
And as far as green space, what do you call the five blocks down? What do you call that park by the river where everyone fishes, plays baseball, the fair is down there, you have coffee festival? Isn't that green space? Five blocks away. It's not on Main Street. It's not on the corner, not across the public library. It's beautiful. That's green space. This would not be green space. This building is 133 years old. 133 years ago, there was no word like green space. But this, I suppose there was a City Council, I don't know, but the city was here. That's what I'm asking you to consider. This is not to be taken lightly. This is not just a little thing on the agenda. This really matters. And to rely on a one-sided survey, that's, I just don't understand that. If the, I never got a survey, and if the survey said, would you like green space, I would have said, yeah. But if it was accurate, and said, would you, at that location, would you rather have green space, or have that building restored, or have the building not demolished, that would have been a real choice. That would have been an accurate choice. If you're sending out a one-sided survey, you're getting one-sided information. True?
Thank you. Just so you know, we don't take this decision lightly either.
Well, you were smiling at me. You were laughing when I said 133 years old. I'm not laughing. I'm really upset.
Okay. I'd like you to be respectful. I smiled because I thought, are any of us going to live 130 years? Well, that makes all of us smile a little.
I wasn't joking, Your Honor. With respect, I wasn't joking.
Okay. With all due respect, I apologize.
How serious this is.
I apologize. I thought that was a facetious question.
Thank you. No, it wasn't facetious. I'm not trying to be snotty.
Further comments, further comments that you'd like to share with our Commission before we move forward?
Pardon me?
Further comments you'd like to share with our Commission before we move forward?
Don't make a mistake. Don't waste this.
Thank you.
You have this one, you know, one chance. And after tonight, I understand, it'll go to another meeting for another vote. Is that right?
No.
No.
Oh, this is it?
This is it.
That's my understanding, yes.
This is it, tonight?
Yes, that's correct.
Deal or no deal?
Well, the Commissioners will discuss how they wish to move forward.
Right.
Right. Alderperson...
Here, isn't he a Kittleson?
I'm sorry. Alderperson Johnson would like to speak as well. So if you'd have a couple more seconds, a couple more minutes to finish up, and then Alderperson Johnson would like to speak.
All right. Don't blow this. You have this one opportunity. I guess it comes around once every 133 years.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Commissioners. I was at the council meeting when the Attorney Dregney was speaking, and he did say there was a conflict within the statutes. And that's why we're bringing this all up. And second, I would hope that this goes to the City Council, because we are voted to represent the constituents. We're not nominated or put on the board. So I think this is a really big issue, that I think it should go to the Council, and we should be able to, I would hope that you guys would table this until we can get this situation worked out. Also, as far as it being a public land park, I think we're going to be getting into issues as far as if anything happens on the land with individuals. It's not city, but it's public. I mean, how much are we going to want to be involved with a public land that's a park? And also, another thing that I would love is to go to Council is, and not have it just be the Planning Commission, is because the person that owns this is actually on the City Council. And I would think if we don't cover all our bases and make sure that we follow all the statutes, as Attorney Dregney brought up points on, it might look like we're favoring our own. So I just think we should bring it to the Council, so it's all clean and above board, and that other constituents can weigh in on it. So, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I think this is a really important thing, and to my knowledge, we haven't discussed as a Plan Commission or as a Council anything regarding a private-public area within our city. I think that deserves some discussion if we're going to make some decisions here on something like this. The other thing is, when this building is torn down, what you're going to see from Main Street is the side of the house behind this house, which is, you know, you've got a gas meter and other things. What you're going to see from Fourth Street is an unfinished side of a building that's owned by the current owner of this proposal. And have we discussed anything regarding finished, finishes on the side of a building when it's actually seen from the street? I know we do have some things about that in our ordinances, but we certainly haven't discussed that here today. That might be something we want to consider. There's all kinds of different things regarding this, that, in my opinion, this is premature. We should be dealing with all of these issues, and we just haven't been. So...
Thank you. Commissioner Hannah?
Sure. Thanks. I think in regards to the public-private park, I don't see anywhere in here that it states that it's going to be public. So I could see that it would be the same as a privately-owned property. And if the owners invite people to enter the property, then it's their choice. I don't, it's not going to be owned by the city, so I don't see how the city should have any sort of jurisdiction or control over private-public park, and they've never entered into negotiations to have a partnership about it. So I don't see where we have the authority. As far as sending it to the Council, I reference what I started with. I feel like, you know, when this proposal was submitted, and you could see in the timeline when it was, they followed every single rule, put together additional items as requested, understanding that they would be, I guess, assessed under the current rules. And so to go through and change the rules, and adjust things, and make them go above and beyond, to me, isn't very ethical, because everything was in place. I feel like we are following the rules. The Attorney has made a ruling. And so then to, again, supersede the Attorney after you've already asked him to make an opinion on it, to me, tells me that we're not following the professionals. So I'm going to follow the professional and respect the decision by the Attorney. And I'd say that we need to act on this tonight. And I don't see that there are any other issues. As far as visually, the building, I don't see that the current owner of the adjacent property who owns this property, it's not in their nature to have an ugly facade either. I don't think that's in their nature. And then the residential property next door, to me, is in the same condition as this property, is, it's, you know, detracting from the visual quality of the district. I, you know, I still feel the same way, and I think we need to treat this with the facts that are here, because I really do think that they are here. So...
Thank you. Commissioner Truul.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that's really where I have been struggling with this since it first came before us, and in, not only at the Plan Commission, but then how it has morphed at the council level. For me, I think it's a couple of things, and Matt hit on a couple of them. I think clearly the Attorney has, City Attorney has told us that we, notwithstanding the other actions that are currently going on at the council... the other actions that are currently going on at the council, and trying to look at improving our process going forward, I think we, the attorney, Dregney, has made it pretty clear that this, this request should be taken up based on the ordinances and the interpretations at the time they submitted it. So, I think it's, it's, to Mike's concern about process, I, I, for me, that one ends up being pretty straightforward. They have a, we have a legitimate request that came before us, and, and as such, we need to ultimately act on it either for or against it. But I think my, my, my challenge with this has been, again, if we talk about what was before us this evening in terms of Attorney Dregney and, and the responses, the real question has, for me, has always been, what's the actual use? Because again, in Attorney Dregney's letter to the property owner, he specifically says, we're looking for a clear description of the proposed appearance of the property, a detailed landscape plan and the like, and what we've been presented, at least, at least what I've seen, is conceptual. And, and the follow-up response is to grade and plant grass. We've submitted a previously, a conceptual plan, but it then indicates that, you know, we'll work with other people to determine what we do in the future and the like. And candidly, that's been my concern with this. All old buildings aren't necessarily historic. This one has a, has an interesting history, and I, and I, I wish that perhaps folks would have been made aware, or, or if it, if it was, has been on the market for an extended period of time, if, if someone had a creative use, reuse for the building, that would've been awesome. I think, from my sense, this, this building, I've seen the building decay on some level. I, to, to Mike's comment again about what the next-door neighbor looks like and things, you know, I don't know if this should've been something that we should've been following up, staff should've been following up, and, and as it was running down a little bit, perhaps following up and trying to see if we could improve it or keep it in some shape. It's to a point right now where I don't know, you know, what the best use of that building is, for me personally. But like I said, where, as I sit here tonight and, and get ready to vote on this, I'm still struggling with, with, if, if the action is to move forward and to take the building down, I don't know what's gonna be left there. I don't know what's coming back. And, and that's really, again, with regard to, to the specific response that we got back, I struggle with that. Because if I, if I knew that there was a better use, and again, not, not, I do understand this historic nature of the buildings and things, again, for those of you who don't know me, I'm, I'm a contractor. We do historic renovation amongst other things, so I, I certainly have a feel for it. But I, but as I sit here today, I guess part of my, my question is, it's okay to, to my friend Mike's comment, you know, once we take the action, it's done. And, and I guess the second part of that for me is, then what? What, what is really gonna end up there? And I was struggling on this public-private element here, too. The concept plan that we have before us looks like an attractive park area that could, we could find in other areas of the city and other things, but I just, I guess I'm struggling a little bit to try and figure out whether it was truly the intent of the, of the owners, that if they do this, are they proposing that this will be a public park? And, and if, if that's the case, is it your intent to turn around and donate it to the city, so it is in fact a public park? Or are you truly willing to take, you know, is it gonna be open for the community? And if it is, are you willing to take the responsibility that comes with that? And that's a real challenge. Not only responsibility, but the liability. So, for me, that's, that's really been my, my struggle, even, and it hasn't gotten any clearer tonight. I, I, I think, as I said, it's, it's caused us as a council to take a look at our overall policies about how we're gonna handle demolition requests in the future. And I, I just, you know, we do have to take it very seriously. And, and I guess, to that point, I would ask if the owner would like to, to respond, I, I would like to, again, find out what your intent is.
So, I forgot, oh. So we had a conceptual plan for garden space, just not two garden, not vegetables, just a garden space. Attorney Dregney sent me an email and said he wanted to know, and perhaps that's the ordinance, very specifically.
Yes.
The species and, and, and I was taken off guard, because it was a Friday afternoon, and I said, "Well, I don't know that. I mean, I can honestly tell you right now, I don't know that. I don't, I have no idea what I would plant there." And he, the part that got me was, it was binding. Whatever I brought forth was binding, as far as plant species and trees and height and all this. And so, I said, "Well, I don't know. I don't know. So if we remove the building, planted grass, and then," I mean, I would come and ask, can I, you know, we're not willy-nilly. We weren't just going to do whatever we want, because it is private property, even though a portion of me felt like I could, but that's not, that's not the way we operate. And like I said in the lengthy email to, and maybe you weren't on that, on that, I don't know, but, you know, all we wanted was the city's blessing. And we're not, you know, my husband was born and raised, he was born in Stoughton Hospital, so, you know, I understand the historic part. I just, I understand keeping wonderful old buildings, and I don't wanna, I'm not gonna stand up here and read this whole thing again, but our intention wasn't just to go tearing down old buildings or historic property. We just wanted to remove the building that's been for sale for a very long time, and prior to it being for sale was not kept up. And I do take a little bit of offense to the fact that the half-finished building next to said property, because he's put a new roof on that said adjacent property, Mike, and he has repaired all the cracks, he's replaced the windows, we've gutted the upstairs twice. So, I do take offense to that, I'm sorry. But all we wanted to do was make it a nice space, and as far, as far as public-private, I didn't know that it was, we just wanted a place for people, if they choose to, you don't have to come if you don't want to. You don't have to walk by, you don't have to come there. But if you choose to, great. As far as liabilities, of course, we would take responsibility. I don't know what to say. It's, all we wanted was just a nice place, because it's not, it, it might be repairable for somebody that has an endless money, but we don't. So, it, the way we obtained it is the way it's going to stay, if it's not removed. And that, I, I'm sorry to say that, but it's, it's not gonna be this, it's not gonna be from 1800. It's not going to. And it, and frankly, the stuff inside, it's not like it's all the same stuff that was there when it was first built. I mean, it's been painted and, you know, renovated inside and, and whatnot, so. Did that answer your question?
Mostly.
I mean, I, the reason I didn't, I had gray, I have grand plans, are you kidding me? But I, I can't, when someone tells me it's binding, I was like, "Oh, well, I'm not certain about that."
And our challenge, ma'am, is, is any of the commercial properties, anybody else that brings something to us and, and comes into plan, one of the items that we'll take up is a site plan. And we'll, we'll, unfortunately or fortunately, go through and talk about the landscape and setbacks and things. And, and to the folks that, that would speak against taking down the building, they would also offer the fact that, once we say yes, that's also binding, too. And so, that's, that's where, for me, again, trying to understand what might be coming back afterwards is important, as a part of it, because it's, it's, it's a, it's a very important corner, and, and so, we appreciate, you know, any input you can bring.
I have a question.
For me? No? I'm, I'm sorry, Michael had, do you mind, Michael?
That's fine.
Okay, sure. Commissioner Maloney. Amy, I think Commissioner Maloney has a question.
I had a question for you as well. Next to the city of Middleton, City Hall, they took down a two-story brick building that the city bought the lot, and that's for future expansion into a, for more parking. It's currently sitting in grass until that happens. I may have assumed that you were planning something for redevelopment here, and I guess I question, once you get this building down and it's put to grass, is your plan to combine anything, or put, put this lot for sale for redevelopment, or is it to leave it as an open space like this?
It's not for redevelopment, and it's not for, someone had mentioned paving. No. Because you have to come into, you have to come into the adjacent parking lot to get to it. There's no way to get to it as far as on a, in a vehicle. And no, we don't wanna redevelop it. We don't wanna develop it. Or, I don't even know what that means, other than build a building, or, no. No, that's not my intention, at all. And it never has been, and if it would be, we'd have to come ask you anyway. You know?
Correct.
Thank you. Further questions for Amy? Okay, thank you. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I've stated to Dennis and Amy in the past, this isn't personal between me and them. I represent the constituents in this city, and I represent people that are into historic preservation in our very historic town. You know, Alder Truel here, Scott, yeah, Scott. Alder Truel, I mean, he stated a lot of concerns here, and I agree with him. You know, what we, we haven't talked about, you know, how a private park affects the city at all. Those are things we should discuss. Pointed out the, right in the attorney's letter, with regard to a requirement that there be a plan, not just a conceptual plan, not just a verbal plan, a plan. If we take action on this tonight, my opinion is we are violating our ordinances as a planned commission. What, what is the difference if we take a little more time here? You know, I'm, I'm not sure what the Kittlesons' plans are, but, you know, if it happens now, or four months from now, or three months from now, we, we wanna get the process right here. We don't wanna be violating our own ordinances as a commission. We wanna be doing things right. And in my opinion, that's why we need to either not take action tonight, or deny it, or whatever.
Thank you. Further comments before we take a vote, there is a motion on the floor. Alder Person Jensen.
Question for the attorney, would we be violating our ordinances?
In our opinion, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Alder Person Boersma would like to make a, a comment before we move forward with the vote.
Very much, Your Honor. So I represent District One as an alder, and I have not weighed in on this until now, I guess. But I'm on a number of committees, and that includes Public Works and Tree Commission and a number of committees. What we, how we typically do it is, you can have a controversial issue on a committee level, and it's referred to the city council with a vote, but taken by the commission or committee. And then, the people who represent the citizens of Stoughton vote on an issue, especially as serious as this one. This one is, has a lot of controversy, and I, I think that in this particular area, especially with conflicting ordinances, which I think we do have, because I've read them, and I've, and our attorney has outlined them, I think that the proper thing is that the city council people make a decision based on a recommendation of the committee. And I understand that our attorney, Dregney, doesn't think that that's the proper way of doing it, but I, I really think that rather than having the, the full weight of this vote go to this committee, I, I think it'd be better that it goes to council. And the reason why I'm saying that is because I think, I greatly respect the dilemma and the hard work that this, this particular group has to, has to do on a weekly, monthly basis at least. And, but I think that ultimately it boils down to the fact that I think that the, the council needs to make a decision on this one. And I don't know how, I don't know how that might be possible for, for your, your committee to refer. I would like to have a, and when I'm sitting at that seat, I would like to have planning tell me what they think, but I would also, based on the fact that I've taken an oath to, to do the right thing and to make the, make decisions, actually for my constituents, both at the city level and in my district, I think it, I, I think we should do it. Not that I really want to, because this is such a controversial issue. I have been sitting through at least three of these, and part of what I keep telling myself is, I'm glad I don't have to make this decision, but that's kind of the chicken way out. And I, and I think that the city council really should make a decision on this, so that's my, that's my point tonight.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanna make two points. First of all, I wanna tell Amy and Dennis that my comments regarding looking at the side of the buildings of the house and your business are not meant to say any, they're not cutting your, your business down. What I was talking about was, has this commission considered having an open space on the side of a building, requiring it to be the same as a finished face on a building? Which is discussed in our ordinances in some places, but this council, or this planned commission has not discussed that. That's another area where there should be some discussion, as opposed to just go ahead and do it, you know, do ahead and pass something. And I would make a motion to table this at this time.
Is there a second on the motion to table? The motion to table fails due to a lack of a second. Alder Person Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Matt, would you consider an amendment to your motion? Wherein, prior to, assuming your, your, your motion to demo is, is approved, that, that prior to the actual demo permit being issued, that the applicant would be required to bring, to, to submit a final plan?
Yeah, I would, I would be in favor of that. I'd like to, yeah, I think that we would have more answers, but I'd like to see this be approved tonight, again, for the ethical reasons that I've stated. I would hate to see this slip and then, you know, be applied under new rules. Again, I don't, I don't think that is fair or ethical. So I would, I would agree to that, that if approved, before the permit is issued, site plan approval would be, need to be, final site plan approval would need to be submitted? Our site plan? Is that?
Yeah, I guess that's where, from, from my standpoint, again, that's, I, I think, you know, for me personally, again, I, I think there's been a miss, I, I don't think we've had great communication back and forth in terms of what, to, to Mike's comment, again, about following the process, you know, specifically in the letter from the city attorney, it talks about needing a clear description, you know, proposed materials, everything else. As, as Amy had indicated, you know, she was given the opportunity, and, and basically came back and said, you know, didn't have a plan at this point, and, and, and again, realizing that anything was gonna be submitted, was gonna need to be binding. I, I think it is important for us to know, if, if your motion is successful, to, to know what's gonna, what's gonna happen there, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's certainly realistic, as this wasn't originally stated to them when they submitted the permit, but in the process of the permit, within a recent, in the recent past. noted that, hey, you also need these additional materials. I think it'd only be fair to give them time to consider those plans. So I would say, yeah, if, I don't know if we want it stated as.
Either way, I would, I would move, move that as an amendment to the, to the motion that, that should the motion be successful, that prior to the actual awarding of the demolition permit, a final site plan would need to be submitted to see. And from a standpoint of staff review, Rodney, Mike, you know, would that, is that something you would want to see?
Do you want it back here?
Come back to us?
I'm asking. Sure, yeah.
So that'll be, that's my motion.
Okay, so I have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
A second.
And I know, Michael, you had your hand.
Uh, just a question, and I think we answered it, but it's going to become then a two-step process. So it's kind of like approval to demo, approval for site plan.
Commissioner Jensen?
I was wondering if Amy had any comment on that.
That's fine.
Is that fine with you? Yeah?
That's perfectly fine. So come up with a plan and then, or the permit would be granted if the plan.
My motion, if it, if it passes, Amy, is effectively saying that the commission would go on record in support of the demo. It would give you the opportunity to move forward from that standpoint. But prior to what, to you actually being able to take out the demolition permit, you would need to come back to it, to get a plan approved by this body for what the land's going to look like or what we're going to do with it, you know? So, no, it's not a case where if this motion passes this way, you don't get the demo permit, go knock it down and then come back.
I realize that, I understand that. Is it going to be very, is the, is the ordinance or the ruling going to be very specific? You know, so that, yeah, not, what am I trying to say? So is it, am I going to come up with a plan, get the plan, and then, no, that's not exactly what we wanted? I mean, as far as how the plan is laid out? Not necessarily what's there. I realize you would say yes or no to the, the plan. But is it going to be clear on what I have to come up with? So then I don't, you know, we don't have five more meetings? And then it's like, oh, no, that, do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I'm understanding.
You know what I'm trying to say?
I'm understanding, Amy, to ask, is it a site improvement plan that you're looking for with the species and the particular types of trees and plants are identified? Is that what the commissioners would like to see?
And I can do that.
Commissioner Hannah?
Sure, I would say.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thanks. I would say, yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, species sizing, something like we would have for another commercial building. But understanding, and Michael, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, in some of these commercial developments, you know, plans that we approve can be slightly adjusted on site. It doesn't have to be to the inch of where it's planted. But it needs to follow the general layout and path. You know, I mean, granted, plants are organically growing. They, they're not, it's not a built structure, so they.
They grow bigger than they were supposed to, or they die?
Right. So, you know, that, that in itself has a different look as it develops. So as long as the vision is a little bit more clear as to what we can expect.
And I would have, but it was pretty short notice.
Thank you. Commissioner Jensen?
Rodney, would it be appropriate for Amy and Dennis to consult with you or Mike as to how exactly to fill this out, to get to the proper?
They're consulting with the commission right now.
No, I mean, but I mean, after, if this passes, would it be proper, appropriate for them to?
We can provide them copies of other approved landscaping plans to give them an idea of what you've seen for other projects. I don't think there's any vacant lot landscaping plans that we can point them to.
Is that helpful?
I guess I would ask the commission if the conceptual plan looks, looks like something that would be acceptable, you know, at least to give you guidance as to what, what to plan. You know, I guess we would probably expect something to come back similar to what the conceptual plan would be. Not that you're going to switch gears and do a 180 and plan something different, I guess. That's, that's kind of what, what you provided already. And so that's kind of what we're, we're thinking that it's going to come back similarly, but just maybe a little bit more specific, so.
Thank you. I had Commissioner Maloney and then Jensen.
I think some of my questions were answered, but.
Okay, all right, thank you. Alder Person Jensen.
I just wanted to make one, one final comment here before we vote. The subject of.
I'm sorry, Greg, I can't hear you.
The subject of whether this planning commission has the final say on it, if it's appropriate for the, for this commission to have the final say on this or not is. It was pointed out that Attorney Dregney said that it was, and that it was appropriate for us to do so. This planning commission is here and it has statutory duties. It's, it's laid out by statute. It's configured that way on purpose to, you know, where I appreciate what, what the alders. What, no, yeah, Sid. What Sid was saying, you know, I appreciate where he's coming from on that, because I've struggled with this myself. We've got another issue that's going to be coming up tomorrow as well. But the, the reason for it is to prevent any political footballs from happening. And that's exactly what this would have been if it went to council, is we would have had a political football. And there's, you know, we have three commissioners here that are elected and three commissioners that are professionals in the business. I think it is appropriate for this committee, this commission, to make a decision tonight and have that be a final decision. And, well, I'll leave it at that. I don't want to make any more comments, because it's not appropriate.
Thank you. I think, I said, Michael. Michael Alder Person Engelberger.
I'm going to vote no on this, just because I'm not interested in, in seeing a historic building in our downtown Main Street be demolished, even though it may be delayed until a plan is voted on by this commission. But I would still point out that under our current ordinance, it states that the plant commission makes a recommendation and the city council makes the final decision. That is a fact that's in our ordinance. And by not following that, we're violating not only our ordinances, but the state constitution. So I'm going to be voting no on this.
Do you have that section again, Michael? I'm.
Right here in, in our attorney's. It's in our attorney's letter, of, the letter of January 20th.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And he, he and our staff reassert that in other memos to the council and to the plant commission.
Thank you.
And to the owner.
So we have an amendment to the motion to vote on that first. And I'm going to ask Rodney or Michael to help repeat that for me, because you have minor scribbles that I wrote down.
Well, I think we're having to ad lib a little bit, because I don't think the, the initial motion, I think, was to recommend approval of the demolition.
Of the resolution.
Of the, the demolition. The demolition. I don't think it was specific to the resolution.
You're right.
Motion for approval by Hannah, yep.
Yeah. And then the subsequent amendment. One second.
Yep.
Prior to demo permit, a final site plan be submitted to planning commission. Seconded by Maloney.
Yep. Okay, so first we'll vote on that amendment, which states prior to demolition of the property, a site plan, a site plan would be presented to plant commission for their approval. Sure, Commissioner Engelberger?
Well, that wasn't just stated. So that's why I want to make sure what, what we're voting on here. That's not what Michael just stated.
I'm sorry if I added something. Michael, say it again.
That prior to a demolition permit, a final site plan be submitted to the planning commission? For the landscaping.
And I added for approval. I added for approval, was that?
Yes.
Always anticipated.
Is that right?
For approval.
Plant commission needs to approve the site plan before they can move forward. I added those two words for approval. That's okay.
That's consistent with, with my intent.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the intent.
Thank you. It gets hard after a conversation to figure out the exact words. Thank you, Michael. So that's the amendment before our plant commission. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No?
No.
That motion carries with Alder Person Engelberger voting no. That takes us to the original motion that, this evening, which came from, turn my paper around. Commissioner Hannah with the second by Commissioner Maloney to approve demolition of this property at 305, 315 East Main. Okay. Attorney Callen, is there anything else that we should approve or that we should include in this motion?
Just that it's, that the vote on the motion is based on the discussion preceding the motion.
And I didn't, going through those points in that resolution that we talked about and?
That I think have been adequately discussed by the commission.
Okay. And is that properly reflected? Okay, thank you.
Just so I understand, so effectively, if you ultimately feel we should be voting perhaps on the resolution, if the action is taken, if the motion is to, is successful in, to demo the property, I would assume that any place, just as we work our way through here, where you gave us an is or an is not, or contribute or does not contribute, that those, those elements would be consistent with that motion to either demo or not, or save?
I think that's a fair way to, to view the vote.
As opposed to go in, as opposed to going to each of these items and voting?
Yeah, I mean, one alternative is to do what you suggested, or to, just to, to look at H and I, and then decide H and I, which are whether, that you would find that the plan is in compliance with sound aesthetic land use, site design, and economic revitalization. And then I is that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. To make those two findings, and then based on that, vote the question.
Okay, so discussion, I believe, help me on this one.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing you say is that we need to have discussion on this resolution, item H?
Yep. Alternatively, you could amend the motion to incorporate those findings in the motion. So you could say, I move to approve the application based on the finding that the application and the plan is in compliance with sound aesthetic land use, site design, and economic revitalization, and is consistent with comprehensive, the comprehensive plan. You see what I'm saying? To build, to build those findings into the motion itself.
And I know that Commissioner Hannah did identify some of those reasons. I apologize, I didn't, didn't write it down. Is it in your, your best opinion, we should go ahead and do that? And let's fill this out?
I think to amend the motion.
If I could, Your Honor?
Sure, yep.
This is very simple. We're basically voting on a resolution as amended, that we just amended, and it was voted on and passed. And we had an hour and three quarters of discussion regarding pluses and minuses, or is or is not with those, and they're on tape. So I mean, we should vote.
If all are comfortable with that.
In my opinion, I mean, we've already discussed it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine moving.
All right, I just wanted to be sure we were covering all of the bases as we talked about.
Voting on the previous discussion, because I think it's, some of these aren't clear one way or the other. So on the previous.
But your discussion has covered all of the points as identified in this resolution. And if you all feel comfortable that you've done so.
Unless the attorney thinks we need to specifically point out, I mean, H or I, or if, I, I would say a blanket yes or no would.
I would recommend that you, you decide H and I before you vote on the, on the motion, as, like I suggested, as part of the motion.
Okay, so how about if I do, if I do this? If, as a part of the motion, H says, applying one or more of the foregoing factors, the city plant commission finds that demolition of the structure and conversion of the property to open space, and I'm going to use the word is, that's what the motion said.
Right, yep.
In compliance with sound aesthetic land use, site design, and economic revitalization practices. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
There was, that motion carries with one?
Mayor made a motion? How was that? I'm trying to make sure we follow that.
I'm trying not to make a motion, I'm just trying to get some.
I would say.
Who's amending it? You were just voting on that portion of the resolution.
Can I make an amendment to my motion?
Please do so.
All right. Motion for approval, which is a vote on item H as is in compliance, and item I as is consistent with city of stolen comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
So you made a motion to that, just for the H and I?
Yep.
To amend that original motion. Is there a second to the amendment? Second by Jensen. Conversation on that amendment. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries with one no from Engelberger. So that's an amendment. Still takes us back to the original motion to approve the demolition. There was a motion by Hannah, a sec, I mean, we kind of did that, but there's still an open motion on the floor.
What you're approving is the resolution as amended.
Correct.
For the second time.
Well, it's not the resolution, they didn't.
No, not really the resolution, the motion.
It's the motion.
As amended.
His original motion.
Twice amended.
Yeah, his original motion didn't act on the resolution. His original motion indicated the desire to approve the application, but it wasn't approving the resolution.
It's not what we voted on.
That's where it gets sticky.
It's not what we voted on.
Matt described, as we took it down, you described your motion as a motion to approve the demolition.
As amended, the resolution as amended.
The original motion Mr. Hannah made.
I said move for approval of the.
Of the resolution or of the?
Of the resolution.
The resolution, and then I stated.
The resolution without the recitals.
Okay.
And now we've amended it to, to include recital H and I as completed within the motion and subject to the second, which incorporates the requirement for a site plan to be approved.
What I, yeah, what I said was motion for approval, and then I kind of went through all these different items, referencing the resolution.
And this is so important, so that's why we're taking our time to be sure we, we do it right.
So when we prepare the minutes, we need to understand if there's any, any, none of the recitals are in there except for H and I. Is that how you'd interpret the action?
That's how I.
Even recital A has, here, let me, let me make sure we do this clearly. Recital A is a description of the project. Is that supposed to be in this resolution as acted on? I'm looking to the commissioners for help, because I, I'm sorry, Mr. Engelberger, that it's not ridiculous, but I want to make sure we get the minutes correct. And I'm not interpreting them properly, apparently. So, so please help and give me some direction so that we get it proper. We just want it, the way you acted on it.
If I could, Rodney, I mean, Your Honor, if I could.
Yes, please.
My understanding is what we did was, the first amendment that Commissioner Hannah made was a motion to approve the resolution as amended, where it would come back.
Yeah, from.
Yeah. And then the second amendment that we just did was to approve the resolution as amended with the H and I and H, or whatever they are.
Correct.
And those were approved. Now, now getting back to the regular motion would be to approve the resolution as amended twice. My understanding is that. My understanding is that's what we just did.
All right.
And this is what we'd be voting on. Now, I don't know what's not clear about that.
The question is, Michael, there are lots of different blanks. We've never had a resolution that leaves so many questions in a resolution. The resolution that was composed by Attorney Dregney and Laura Callen to help us be sure that we covered all the bases, because this is such an important decision, leaves us questions as we go through the resolution. And that's what Rodney's asking for clarification on. If we vote to approve this resolution, it doesn't answer the questions. And I believe I heard Commissioner Hanna go through some of those answers at the very beginning, but forgive us, because that was an hour and a half ago.
Right.
So let's reiterate and help us go through, walk through this so that we know the answers. If we approve Resolution 10, what does that mean?
Sure.
Commissioner Hanna.
Am I making a motion, or am I just restating my original motion?
Help us restate, please.
I will restate my original motion that just answer everything. Preserving the building is not. And detract from. Contributes to.
Where's contributes to?
Number two?
Uh, two.
Gotcha, gotcha, yep.
Open space plan does. Is not. Does not find. Just wait, correction. Finds. Advance. Advance.
For those in the room, would you like us to read what this now says after we've circled does and doesn't? Everybody just says, "Be done with it and move on," right? Is that what I'm seeing, nods and shakes? Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are you clear what the resolution... What the original motion to approve the resolution says at this point?
No. I thought we just voted on that.
We did not. We voted on two amendments. We've not yet voted on the original motion, which was to approve Resolution R10-2017, allowing for the demolition of the property.
As amended.
It's amended... Well, we vote on the original motion, we had two amendments subsequently.
Right.
And due to Robert's rules, or following Robert's rules, you vote on the amendment, so you kind of go backwards. Amendment, second amendment, first amendment, back to the original.
And now you vote on the...
We're back to the original.
Resolution as amended twice.
Yep.
That's the process.
Now, I think where I think we are, we are... We have a restated motion with one amendment, is one way to look at it. It's been restated by Mr. Hanna just now.
Yep.
To answer the questions in each of the recitals, E, F, G, H, and I.
Yes.
And the amendment is to that prior to issuance of the building per... Or the demolition permit, the applicant shall submit a final site plan to the plan commission for approval.
Correct. All right, so we understand what we're voting on. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries with alderperson Commissioner Engelberger voting no. Thank you. Okay, back to our second item on our plan commission agenda this evening is Agenda Item Six. This is a request by Don Walker for site plan approval to replace the pavement at 1512 West Main Street. And Rodney's giving a map for us.
Mr. Walker's here. Essentially, he's looking at replacing in kind the pavement surface that's on site, and expanding it slightly to increase the area nearest the buildings and allow for better turning movement up in this general area. Does that correctly depict your request?
Thank you. Commissioners, comments or questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's a motion by Hanna. Excuse me. Second by Truel. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Joe Gallagher is requesting a site plan approval for a vestibule addition at the Manton Community Center, 400 Manton Parkway.
This item on your screen depicts the principal area where they're looking at installing a vestibule in the front part of this building. You can see the configuration for the accessible stalls are also depicted on the plan to allow for better entry into the building. Applicants are here, either answer questions or elaborate on what I just said. Does that summarize it, or? Okay.
If you'd like to step up to the microphone, please, so folks at home can hear the conversation.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Joseph Gallagher with Destry Design Architects in Madison. Basically, how you just described it is correct. We would be looking to put the new vestibule in. We would be removing a portion of the existing overhang and actually relocating it over the entrance to the Fairgrounds offices, just to, you know, tie the two entrances together, just a more aesthetic appearance. Yeah, I have samples of the, you know, the CMU that we're looking to use. I can elaborate on anything if there's any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Maloney?
Is it matching the existing?
Yes, yes, the plan is... Actually, here, I'll show you the... The plan for now is that the bottom would be a darker band of split-faced CMU with a precast ledge element that would travel across, and then the remainder, the CMU, would be a smooth CMU that would just match the color of the existing Manton Center.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's a motion by Engelberger, second by Truel. Further comments or questions? Commissioner Hanna?
Yeah, I was wondering if we just referenced the staff review letter. There's just a note on landscaping that's required?
Yes, sure. So we are planning on... I have reached out to Brett Hibbert, the Public Works Director, regarding terrace trees that are going to be planted along Manton Parkway. So that conversation is in the works. We are also looking at landscaping. The site plan up there. There is a, I'm going to call it an oval, like circular shaped space. When you approach from the Fairgrounds entrance, we're going to be doing some landscaping there as well. It's currently just a grassy kind of dirt patch, but we're going to...
This area here?
Yes, correct. And there is some landscaping that runs along. The building is currently just gravelled areas that we'll be putting some plantings in as well. That should definitely put us over the requirements.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanna?
Sure, so the 20 further required points will be put into that... That space, right?
Correct, yes. We'll be doing some work in that space that was highlighted, and just some, you know, small shrubbery along the building.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. A request by Mark Seidel of Pinnacle Engineering for a certified survey map, a CSM approval for the Aldi's Food Market at 1399 US Highway 51. Planning Director Shiel.
Containing your packet is the item before you, as well as on this screen. You'll note the principal change to this is really their attempt to remove an access point that was reserved for future right-of-way purposes back in the days of the town, when it was in the town of Rutland. As you can see, they even allowed building over it in the past, so I think there isn't any reason to retain that easement in our minds.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Truel, second by Hanna. Conversation? Commissioner Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Question for Rodney. Didn't we do something with a sidewalk regarding this property a while back?
Yeah, the site plan was before us already.
Okay.
And the sidewalk is planned to be installed along here. Recall, along this front edge, there is actually a 10-foot wide shared use path.
Yeah.
And then there will be a sidewalk extending to this. This isn't the site plan, this is just the CSM associated with it. During their transaction to acquire the property, they closed on it actually last week. The open-ended item was this recently discovered.
And then what needs to come back, Rodney?
It does not...
The SIP?
This is just recommendation to council.
Right.
The site plan and everything's been approved for the Aldi's facility to move forward.
The SIP has been approved already?
It was a site plan, it wasn't an SIP. It was a part of a GDP.
So we're not approving anything with regard to the building, or?
We did already.
We did that already, okay.
Yep, we've done the building and site plan.
Okay.
It's just the survey adjustment.
Okay.
I'm sorry. It's just a survey adjustment. Yep, correct.
I think there maybe, just a question, there was an older site plan in here that didn't show the sidewalk, so maybe that was just a prior version, or?
It was a requirement of the ultimate, you're correct.
Okay.
Any additional comments? So I think, let's look to see if we can find that sidewalk.
Well, it was a condition of the approval, so.
Oh.
For the site plan, yep.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. A request by Brenda and Todd Barman for a site plan approval to reconstruct the parking area at 603 West Main Street. Planning Director Shiel?
Due to technical difficulties, I'm not able to pull this plan up in front of you, but Mr. Barman is here, and the commissioners have it in their packet and in their electronic files for this site plan, and essentially redevelopment of an existing site. So Mr. Barman maybe could probably provide you the best insight into the strategy they're utilizing here.
Yeah. Excuse me. Todd Barman, this is for 603 West Main Street, the former Sicko Food Mart. I'm welcome to answer any questions you might have. I mean, unless you just want me to kind of give a basic description of what we're doing.
Just a quick overview, please.
A quick overview is that we bought the property about two and a half, three years ago. It had sat vacant for a couple of years before that. We purchased it while it was still retro... I mean, it was still set up to be a gas station petroleum service business with the food mart. We've pulled the tanks. Ground is clean. We have not put the concrete back yet, because of the amount of pea gravel and everything else, we wanted it to settle over time before we put anything back over the top. So this is to bring the parking lot back, but in addition to just resurfacing what used to be the, you know, almost 100% concrete throughout the whole site, we're going to be putting retail in the building, so we wanted to bring some landscape back in. So we're bringing grass back into the apron area between the sidewalk and the street. Eventually, we'll have curb and gutter to eliminate a significant amount of the curb cut, so we'll just have the two primary curb cuts off of Monroe Street and off of Main. We've really tried as best we can to meet all the current code as relates to the planned business zoning class, but if we... As we look to lay out the site to meet every single requirement of the current code, if we're building brand-new, which we aren't, you'd only be able to get about three parking stalls within that space because of all the setbacks. And so we tried to kind of balance, you know, getting a significant amount of setback on the inside of the sidewalk, particularly between the two parking areas, to eliminate what we call cross-cutting. We own the residential property right next door, and one of the things we've observed over the years is how dangerous that intersection is, because people, when it was even a gas station, would cut across... They'd shortcut, when they're coming down Main heading east, they would cut across that lot to head into QuickTrip parking lot. This would prevent all of that, because you've got the majority of the landscaping between the two parking areas. It also makes for a nicer entrance to the building. So that's the main thing, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted, is it going to be an ice cream shop? Is that what it is?
A sweet shop.
Sweet shop?
Yeah.
Okay, and when are you planning on opening?
Well, we are opening by Centumai, but it's probably going to be cutting a little bit close. We're still getting estimates on the concrete contractors. We had to go before you guys to get all this stuff approved, which hopefully will. So we may not make Centumai, but shortly thereafter. We won't have ice cream immediately, just because there's a little bit more investment in terms of equipment with the ice cream. We're going to start with other kinds of sweets, and then... My wife's an artist. Originally, we were going to put art in the building, and art's a little bit of a challenge, in part because there's a lot of art businesses already in the downtown and in the district. And so she may still have some of her art in there as well to complement the sweets, but that's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanna, and then Truel.
Thanks. Yeah, my question would just be about the screening for the garbage bins from the street.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of what that is going to look like, or materials?
Yeah, the... I don't know if you've driven by the site, but right now, there is the picket fence that runs between our property, which is further down Monroe Street. I don't know if it's visible in any of the shots we've got, but it's essentially would be a completely... Completely opaque picket, six foot high. We would essentially mount... There's already a concrete slab existing where that is, so we would use the steel brackets that would anchor the two four-by-four posts, and then we would attach the six-foot-high, completely opaque screen that would match the wraparound picket fence that separates our property, our residential property from the building.
So, yeah, so there already is a picket fence existing on the south side of the lot?
Yes.
And it's going to be attached to it?
Yes.
So it's going to be screened basically from the south and the west, and then?
Yes. There'll be a small, three-foot opening?
Access.
That'll allow you to pull the... Right now, we're not doing a dumpster, where we've just got the, you know, the wheel bins that we've got, a little bit bigger than a typical residential one, because the garbage service likes us to wheel those out to the street.
Sure.
And so we'll still have to kind of pull them through. And that's one of the reasons why we're not having... Right now, there's a sidewalk that's up against the building, and when they excavated to pull the tanks out, they had to undercut the sidewalk and the building, so the sidewalk has since sunk. So we're going to have to pull that out, and we're not putting the sidewalk back in. We're just going to have the paving for the lot just go seamlessly straight up to the building. It allows us not only to have better ADA access, but it also allows us to wheel those bins through easier.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Truel?
Thank you, Your Honor. And just aesthetically, it looks like all you're really proposing to do is add some horizontal elements and perhaps just tie in some colors here a little bit, or?
In terms of the landscaping or the building itself?
Building itself.
Building itself, ultimately, we want to carefully remove some of the additional paint that's still on the building. One of the cool features of the building itself is that it's got the local stone on the lower courses, and then it's got the bricks above. The bricks above have been painted, and we've used an environmentally safe chemical stripper on parts of the building just to see how well it would come off. On the front, we have not done that yet. So eventually, we want, particularly, you can see here on the tall chimney. The chimney is really distinctive in that it's got the cream brick in the center, and then on the corners, each of the corners that kind of come out three dimensionally, is the higher-quality red brick that you'll see on the building. So eventually, we would like to get all that off as money starts... The building's going to start generating some money for us in order to be able to do some of the more aesthetic kinds of things that we want to do. But, yeah, otherwise, all we're changing is, or we've already added the lights, the gooseneck lights that will light where we plan to put signs, which is another application we'll have to submit for the sign locations and get those permitted. But there'll be one sign on this side that faces QuickTrip, and then there'll be the two signs that will go across the front of the building, just above the garage doors that we brought back.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions?
You can see where I've simulated the red coarse brick on the chimney, so hopefully, hopefully, all that comes through and looks... I mean, right now, it's looking real close. That simulation was done even before we had brought the garage doors back and put the lights up, and so we're already moving pretty well toward this direction.
That looks very nice.
I'm move for approval.
Motion by Hanna? Is there a second?
Of the resolution.
Second.
And second by Truel. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Future agenda items.
Comprehensive plan discussion will be on the May, the May meeting. So that will be on the, the agenda at the next Planning Commission meeting. Iconica, the senior housing proposal on the end of Jackson Street. The newer, new 100 unit multifamily slash senior care housing is in our office now, and anticipate having a meeting on that on May 10th. May 8th. And there's one other item. Oh, GDP amendment, potentially GDP amendment for several lots within the commercial center of Kettle Park West.
Tractor supply.
And tractor supply for their conditional use, reuse of the mid, at least half of the former Walmart facility. Will be on the May 8th meeting agenda as well.
All right, thank you.
You know which half, Rodney?
The western half.
There's some documents already available online.
On the website, yep.
That's right.
Move for a...
You want to approve?
Approval? Yeah, this is approval. Approval for adjournment.
You can approve adjournment, thank you. Is there a second?
In the form of a resolution.
Second by Jensen. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
No? Motion carries.
See, Matt, I'll let you make all the motions tonight. You got yourself confused when you get to the end.
So tractor supply website has...
Our sit-in under the Planning Commission meeting.
I haven't gone out there to look, okay.
Aye.